This starts becoming, this goes from the planning stage into the implementation phase, which will probably be the fall of this year. And the monies then would transfer to, and you'd be able to have your accommodation at that point. That's hypothetically speaking. They have the same situation for Itasca. They have the same situation for Addison, Downers Grove, Westmont. I'm trying to think of some of the other towns.
You answer my question. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? The other alderman Wesley.
Frank, you have 182,312, correct? For over 10, that's over a 10-year period.
That would be over a 10-year period with the bulk of it being after the seventh year, which that we've already put money aside.
So you have this already in the budget?
Yes, we have. We've been planning for this, for this, I think, since like 2005 when I first became chief. We knew this was going to happen. We started doing the set aside. This is not going to be a big surprise for everybody. I think we're putting in, I don't want to get ahead of myself, but I think we've got some money set aside and equipment replacement for that this year. But once again, keep in mind, that's earmarked for this project, this project only.
Okay. I thank you for looking forward on this.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is for future meetings, and I have one. I was invited as chairman of the Public Health Safety Committee to the Winter Emergency Action Plan, where the different taxing bodies in Wood Dale met and discussed what was going to be done. And I was impressed with it. I didn't make the second meeting because there was a four-and-a-half-foot drift down the center of my driveway, and there's no way I could get to it. But there was one thing that really caught my eye. The Park District Recreation Complex closed at 7:00 that evening, and the, if needed, the City Hall and Water Treatment Plant at 269 West Irving were to be used for warming centers. Now thankfully, we didn't have to use that, those for warming centers. There was only one outage, I understand, for about 20 minutes in Ward 4. But what it showed me is that there's no good place in Wood Dale for an emergency, real emergency situation. The fire department can't handle it, because they said, because they're going in and out. Public Works can't handle it. As a matter of fact, an emergency treatment center has to have a backup generator. The only place that I know of in town that is large enough for an emergency triage or warming center would be the Park District. But they don't have a backup thing for electricity, the...
Generator.
Generator. So what I would like staff to look at is the possibility of working with the Park District to put in an emerg, a generator at the Park District, whether we split the cost with them, or whatever staff and the Park District can come up with, and they come back to us and let us know what it might be. Unless there is another, that's the only public building in town that I could find. But if there's a private building in town that could handle it, if we could work with them. But I would like staff to come back with something in the next couple of months, so that we do have something in case of a real emergency where people do have to come in.
Alderman, I just spoke with John. The one thing that they are looking at at Public Works at the 730, 732, 720 address for Public Works is an emergency generator up there, which might then help kind of accommodate that on the city end. But with that being said, they're still, we're still reviewing with DuPage County several emergency contingencies. So I would like to kind of maybe put this out a little bit here, so that we can dovetail all this together, so we can make it in a meaningful presentation, because we've got our SNS Drug Distribution Plan going. We've got our emergency OEM plan with Incident Command and this. And we're going to be incorporating some of these addresses and some of these locations into our response. So we'll answer that. I just asked that you give us a little bit of time here, because we are working with other entities outside of Wood Dale. And I think we might be able to come back and answer that question several more months down the line.
Would you need, what, four months?
At least.
Six months?
We'll have it down there.
Okay.
But what I'd like to do is, I know that right now, the thing that's really high on our radar screen is our SNS Drug Distribution Plan with the county. And matter of fact, we have a tabletop going on this month with that, and they're reviewing our plan right now on that.
Okay. No problem. It's something to keep in the back of our minds for the future.
Duly noted. And we'll make sure that we get to report back to you when we start kind of getting down the line a little bit more with some of these exact plans with OEM out.
Okay. So we'll put this off for at least probably six months, but it will be there.
Right. We'll see where we're at.
Any other things to be added? Mr. Eugene Wesley.
The only thing that I would like to see added on, I know at the beginning, I know it doesn't happen often, obviously it did happen, we got hit with a major snowstorm. We do have some hydrants that are flagged already. I would consider looking at to putting some more flags on some hydrants. I would look at maybe a cost sharing with the fire district on that. I'm not saying that we have to do every hydrant, but if we put one on every corner, because there's a hydrant at every corner on our side streets, if we flagged those, I think that would be more helpful for us to find them. Even though we got the GIS system that every hydrant is marked, I think that might be something we might want to look at in the future down the line.
I believe Mr. Kramer has.
Yes, sir. Mr. Kramer.
We did take a look at our hydrant flags that we have currently in stock. The ones that we put on are a metal style, metal flag. They pose problems in the summertime with children hanging on them, playing on them, and then they no longer are upright. And then in the wintertime, we go to put them back up, and they're either broken, or removed, or bent. I did ask staff to look into some new style flags that perhaps would be a little more susceptible to the abuse that they sometimes get in certain areas. So we're going to come back to you at a later date, probably with a purchase, either with we approach the fire district to see if they'd be willing to co-op with us a little bit on it, but we can definitely bring that back to you.
Thank you. Anything else?
Yes, Alderman, just for the agenda, and you're aware of it, on the next committee meeting, I'm going to be bringing to you an amendment to Chapter 15 of our ordinance code. We've been negotiating with the state's attorney's office to expand our enforcement to be included into, for child seats and seat belts into our ordinance. So we'll be working with the attorney, doing the resolution for that, and looking for an amendment on that. So that will be a future agenda item for, I believe, the 24th committee meeting.
Good. Any others? Then I'll make a motion to adjourn Public Health Safety and Judiciary Committee for today. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Call the Public Works Committee to make the take or don't that. Same people are present in the motion approved in minutes, January 27, 2011.
So move.
A second.
Corrections, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Report and recognition of a water main, water main contract amendment for RJN. This is the water main design on Addison Road. They're looking, staff is recommending a amendment for contract to RJN Group Corporation for $19,890 for additional charge to redesign that water main. I believe this is a water main that we voted on several months ago to re, put a new water main in. There's a couple of concerns, some things that came up, and I will turn this over to the RJN group, or Mr. Kramer, on what's going on with this water main, why there is an increase in this amendment.
Thank you, Chairman Wesley. To give everyone a brief update on the project, back six months ago, we asked RJN to design Addison Road Water Main originally. That project was put together by the previous city engineer for 1,000-feet replacement. That project escalated a little bit, became a 3,000-foot water main replacement, basically from Potter to Elizabeth. RJN's been working diligently on the project for the last several months, trying to get a alignment passed to other outside agencies, DuPage County Department of Transportation, and now the DuPage County Forest Preserve. Currently, the water main zigs and zags, but in large part and parcel resides on the west side of Addison Road. So we could not put the replacement water main on the same side of the road that it currently sits. We needed to look at the east side as a possibility, and in looking at the east side, we had hoped that we would be able to put a portion of that water main in Addison Road right away, underneath the pavement. Unfortunately, the county is not allowing us to do any work in that right-of-way for the road. That came about because they are also going to resurface Addison Road starting July 1 of 2011. So with that said, we had to approach the forest preserve and ask for a opportunity to use a portion of their easement. Well, they actually own to the middle of Addison Road. The county does not own a right-of-way on their own road. They actually have acquired an easement from the forest preserve. So we must buy an easement, as the city, for about 500 feet, 500 linear feet of the forest preserve's property to put our water main in. And before I turn it over to Mr. Mike Young for any additional comments and questions, I will give you that right now, we've nego, we've tentatively agreed upon a price for the lease, or the easement, of $40,000. That does not include any trees that may need to be taken down or removed from that parcel of land, that we will be, we will have to do a site visit, walk the, walk the area, and come up with a price on the trees. The project, as we discussed in the last CIP discussion, will be split up between two years. The reason being is, the project is just too large now to get done before July 1, 2011. So basically, we're designing the project where we do a portion of the north and all the intersection crosses, anything that would disturb Addison Road first, this year between, right now, the bid is set for February 15, and basically, we're going to start construction as soon as we possibly can. And then the remaining portion of it, including the directional drilling in the forest preserve, will be completed the following year. So that's kind of a quick and dirty update of where we're at. Again, I'll turn it over to Mike Young, who's the branch manager for RJN Group in Wheaton.
Just kind of add a little bit to that, and just kind of fill in with the different parts of the amendment and why, you know, why this came to be. We'd originally talked a little bit with the Forest Preserve District when we were looking at that side, and basically, their answer is, find another way, and if you can't find another way, then come back to us. So we approached DuPage County with the alignment we wanted to do to go within the road, and at the, and at the initial meeting with them, they did not object to that. They didn't, they didn't say they approved it, but they did not object to it. And so we moved forward with that alignment and doing the design of that alignment. And then later on, in our discussions with them, they came back and said, oh, no, you know what? Actually, we're not going to accept that in the road. So then we were looking at alignment, could we keep it on the, on the west side where the current water main is, and try to put it adjacent to it? You have to keep a little bit of distance and keep the existing water main in service to keep everybody's water going. So we prepared a preliminary alignment of that, sent it out to all the utility companies, wanted to get their comments. Well, AT&amp;T's notorious for not responding to those things. We kept pushing them and pushing them, but it was important to move this design along. As it turns out, they've got a big duct right in the area you wanted to put it, so it's not feasible no longer to put it on the west side where we wanted to. So now we're at the current alignment, which is on the east side. So in the different parts of it, as we, as we moved those alignments, there was additional effort to move that around. So that was part of, of what the amendment is, as well as now that we're splitting the product into two parts. The products are the same, but you still have to put a package together for the contractors to bid on, so there is some effort to split, to split into two parts. And that's the, the primary part of that. There are a couple other minor parts of that, and I could go into those if you want me to, but...
Let me ask you one question here.
Sure.
If you got the approval from the county at one time, but not full-blown approval, how far were you in the designing phase when you presented to the county at first?
When we first, when we first gave...
When you first approached the county and going on their property, or whatever, right away, how far were you into designing phase?
We were, we were probably 30, 40 percent, basically just preliminary alignment, not a lot of the details on it, but the preliminary alignment. And that's what we brought to them in that first meeting, in which they did not indicate an objection to that. So then we moved beyond that and started adding more of the details on it, which take more, more time and effort when we, when we have to move.
Let me ask you this question. So why did we not get an agreement with county before you moved forward on the project? The yes or no answer before you went from, from 30 percent, then you went, got the verbal approval, but not in writing, saying they had no problem, so that gives you the right to go ahead and move forward with the rest of the design? So what we basically doing, we're doing amendment for you to redesign or revamp it on the other side. My question to you, and I know this project's got to be done, but I would hope, next time, if you don't get it in writing or down the line, that you don't move forward into it, because you designed 30 percent of it already, and then brought 30 percent to them, and then they said, no. We should have waited for the final blessing, yes or no, and go forward with it.
Right.
So, in a way, I kind of dropped the ball on your company on this one, because you didn't do that. Okay? The other thing that I'm concerned about, and again, I'll bring it up, I'll bring it right up in the open. It seems like our other taxing bodies in this committee does not want to work with us that well. We got the Forest Preserve that is requesting almost 40 Gs, $40,000, without the trees. This needs to be done, no doubt about it. I'll, I'll make the motion approved, but again, I hope that, Mayor, I hope you contact the Forest Reserve and see what we could do on this, and do that, because this project now turned into, what's the price tag now it's gone up to? John? Add the 40,000 in there, too.
700,000.
700,000. So, anyone else have any comments before I make the motion? Mayor Johnson?
When I learned of the fee that they want to charge us, I contacted Marshall Murphy, our representative from District 1 of the DuPage County Forest Preserve, suggested to her an alternate proposal, which she's going to bring before the board on Tuesday. So hopefully, we will have a solution that doesn't involve us paying that significant amount of money.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Alderman Wesley, when you run up about 30 percent of the project into it, and then it continues to go on, am I understanding this right?
What we had done is, we put, we put together enough of alignment, so about 30 percent, so we can sit down with the county and say, this is what we're wanting to do. At that time, they did not indicate they had any issues with what we're showing them, and they also told us at that time of their plans to reconstruct Addison Road this year, and the fact that we had to have our work done by June 30 of this year. And with that reason, we've been moving this project forward to get it done. It's going out, I have the final plans here, it's going out next week, so that we can get all the road work done at a much lower cost, construction cost, because we can open cut it now before they resurface it. And so that's, that's really the main reason we kept moving this project forward, even though there were some issues with it, because of the, because of the tight deadline, because the costs would go up a lot. If we tried to do it after they resurfaced the road, you wouldn't want to reopen it, and if you did it trenchless, it's a lot higher cost. So that was part of the impetus for moving it forward.
I'm just trying to figure out what double work you've done.
The double work we did is that the 30 percent was what we presented kind of the first time. They did not indicate objections. So then we moved it beyond that to 60, 70 percent before they indicated, and had some initial discussions about what our plans were, and that's when they said, oh, well, we've decided actually you can't do that. And so then, and so that, then to move it to a different location, there's, there's a level of effort to modify the plans to, to show it.
That seems like a very, much so to move forward without communication of 30 percent of a plan.
Well, that is one of the reasons we sat down with them, is to, is to show that to them, to get their comments on what we're doing. I mean, they're not going to officially approve it until you submit a final plans for a permit, but that's one of the reasons we had the meeting with them, to show them, put them in alignment, allow them to comment on it.
Okay.
Thank you. Just to reiterate, this is not a reflection of RJN's work. This is a reflection of, we did our homework, we went before the county first, let them know with some preliminary plans, we told them what our expectation was, that we thought we could put this under the pavement. Our intention was not to put the entire water main, that 3,000 feet, just the portion that resided basically where the forest preserve was, because we had indicated that we did not want to have to work to put water main in the forest preserve right-of-way. So we originally went to the county under the assumption that we would be able to do that, and they did not give us any indication in our preliminary meeting that we could not do that. And then, once that came back negatively, we then looked at other alternatives. So that was a staff decision, myself as well, told them to look at any alternative other than going to the forest preserve, knowing that we would definitely incur some costs by putting our water main on that area. So by no means should this be a reflection on RJN. Unfortunately, this project just has some nuances in it, and intricacies that unfortunately, we have no other alternative but to put the water main in that location. We tried all other avenues first, and it came back around to the one that we did not want to, you know, actually have to pay for. But it turns out, that is the only, the only alternative that will actually work. There are a lot of other issues with the west side alignment, which we did not bring up, which are overhead power lines, and easements with private residences that we would have to do to do that. So again, this is, this was not our preferred alignment, but again, this is the only alignment now that is possible for us.
Would it be appropriate, after what the mayor said about this other meeting, to table this for the time being, or, may I ask the mayor, would it be appropriate to table this still after that?
Motion to table is always in order, but I think this is a contract amendment on the engineering, but I do have a follow-up question when I get a chance.
Well, when you're done with it, maybe we can hold off until the following meeting.
Who made the decision on the county side you can't put it in the right-of-way?
Bob Colar and Dave Fury. That was the meeting that we had.
So is this something that there's a political solution to, that the chairman of the transportation, the transportation committee can overrule that?
I believe it's a policy decision that they are no longer allowing any infrastructure under their pavements.
Policy as in set by the county board and the transportation committee?
I don't know if I can answer that. I, I'm not sure if I can answer that question.
I guess what I'm getting at is, where is your preferred location? Because either, in either event, whether we're dealing with the forest preserve or the DuPage County Transportation, there may be a political solution. So from you, where is your preferred location? In the street or on the forest preserve?
As a public works director, I would say that I would like it on the east side of the street. I would not like it under the pavement, for the plain and simple fact, if I ever do have a main break, if I am the public works director in 30 years, when we, God forbid, have another main break on Addison Road, I'm hoping, we won't have to excavate the pavement and restore it. I would rather have it in the parkway where...
So to get the easement from the forest preserve?
Correct.
Okay.
When did you present this to the, to the district?
DuPage County Department of Transportation or the Forest Preserve District?
Oh, no, the first one. To the, to the DuPage County.
The original meeting was in September, I believe, that we had with them, and then we were notified, I believe it was in November, that they would not accept the alignment that we had shown.
Who was, who was city manager at that time? No, who was the city manager in Wood Dale at that time? Was that under, was that before Wally left?
I believe Wally was still here.
Yes, Wally was still here. I know that, because he said September. You know, this is what the mayor said, it's a political decision. You work with the numbers, and the city manager works with people. This is something where the city manager fell down on, the old city manager. And I think we have a better city manager now, who would get more involved. You know, it's, it's a person-to-person relationship. You know, this whole thing reminds me of, is our dealing with Cook County on the, on the flooding issue. It seems like other bodies don't look at the big picture, and they look at their own fiefdom, and they don't care if Wood Dale floods, and somebody else doesn't care if we spend 40,000, or, or make a promise. It's not your job to get a commitment from another government body. You were in a damned-if-you-do and a damned-if-you-die situation. You did what you think was right, you took the initiative. But once you had a plan, once you knew where the numbers went, should be working with the city manager to get a political input to win your position. You know, water over the dam is over the dam, but I think you've got a better person to work with right now, and I hope that in the future, you always will.
I'm going to... Alderman Roy Wesley.
Do we have a motion on the table, or not?
No, I'm about to make one. Or if you want to make it, go ahead.
No, that's, that's okay. But I don't think staff should get involved with political stuff in any which way.
I didn't say they should, I said they should bring it to the city manager to get involved. They, but they should, at this point, there's a demarcation line between where the numbers go and the people go. Once they know where the numbers go, then they turn it over to those who are politically involved.
Okay.
Okay. I'm going to obtain a motion to, staff recommendation of approve the amendment of $19,890 for additional service for RJN.
I second it.
Question. Alderman Roy Wesley.
Your motion is to amend his bill, but how about the, the other money?
Well, that has not come forward, we just want to bring that to your attention, that that is going to be part of this project.
Does Mr. Kramer need direction to...
Mr. Kramer?
All I need is the authorization to amend the current contract with RJN. We will bring you the bid results once they come back. We'll bring you the results from the forest preserve at a later date, all that. Again, this is just to complete RJN's design and complete the project, and, you know, basically take this thing through bidding.
Okay.
I think eventually, we're going to have to pay it regardless to get this project done.
Alderman Winger.
So as your wish list, Mr. Kramer, that if you had to have it on somewhere, it would be on the east side easement, correct?
Absolutely, on the east side. Currently, the majority of the water main resides on the west. I would like it on the east in the parkway, and not under the road.
Will this amendment include the engineering for the east side, if that's what we get? Or would we have to go back and do more engineering?
The, the plans for putting it on the east side for what we're doing this year is done. I mean, I've got, the plans, I just gave the copy. It's done, it's going out to bid next week. There is a little, there's a little bit of work, because there's another project, it'll be bid next year. The alignment's been done, the plans are really, it's just a matter of doing a little bit to get a bid package out for bidding. So there is a little bit for next year's package for doing that. But the, the engineering really has been done, it's just a matter of getting the plans properly for bidding, so there will be a little bit for next year's program.
Okay, so Mr. Kramer, is it best to hold off on the amendment until we know if we can get the east side or not?
The, I guess I can kind of fill you in, the, the part that we're putting in is critical to move forward because of the timeframe of, for the county, and we're not doing the part in the forest preserve this year. That's next year's part, because that hasn't been worked out yet.
I understand. Okay, thank you. Much clearer.
Alderman Police, do you have anything?
So we have a motion on the floor, we have a second, right?
Do we have a second?
Aye. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Lewitin?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Police?
Yes.
Alderman Cadella?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Chocky.
Okay, now motion carries. Items, computer, item conserve future meeting. Replacement of silver maple trees on Parkway, February. Legos sanitation, sewer connection, February. Citywide drainage solution, February 24, and a treatment plant, February 24. Any other items to be... Mayor Johnson?
We had a request from the Georgetown Homeowners Association, we look at putting up a street light on it. up a street light on it.